Bye bye, take your seat. Visitors will retire behind the rail. We will have our invocation. This morning, to give my invocation, we have a very special guest, the Reverend W. Wilson Good Sr. of First Baptist Church of Pasquale. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Allen Damm. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Gracious and all-wise and eternal God, we know you and we know that when we call upon you, that you will respond. Thank you for always being available to us. You are the Creator of both heaven and earth, and yet you're right beside us when we call you for anything. Thank you. You're the source of all goodness, all mercy, and all truth. You call us your children despite our sins and imperfection. We come to this place this morning to pray for these men and women whom you've allowed to be elected to govern over others. We pray that each will understand their divine appointment and not believe that it was through their power and popularity they occupied these lost seats. Remind them of you, Lord, that you know the beginning and the ending of all their stories, but you have given them the freedom and responsibility to carry out their work. For you said in your word that woe unto those who make unjust laws, to those who issue oppressive laws, to deprive the poor of their rights and withhold justice from your people. We thank you for your presence, we thank you for your provision, and we thank you for your promises. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, and for your redemption and for your love. We thank you for these elected men and women that you place over 1.5 million people in this city, embolden them with the courage to make laws that help people, and honor you. We pray that they become advocates for those others consider worthless are not worth the effort. We pray that all seventeen of them see their role as working on behalf of those that others regard as useless, are disposable, and forgettable. We pray that they will advocate for those that some regard as unimportant because they're black, because they're brown, because they're from Africa, because they're from Haiti, because they're poor, and because they're immigrants. We thank you for this time. We worship you. We praise you. We glorify and lift up your name. For we recognize that we are nothing without you, so keep us close to you and remind us of our obligation to do justice, to love mercy, and walk humbly with you. We ask this prayer in the blessed name of Jesus, who is the Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council will be at ease. Excuse me, we have a little quiet, please. Excuse me, we have a little quiet, please. We're in session. We're in session. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Before I proceed, I'd like to recognize the District Attorney, Mr. Krasner. Before I proceed, I'd like to recognize the District Attorney, Mr. Krasner. Mr. DA, your first time in? Mr. DA, your first time in? Thank you. Thank you. You will see that we do everything legal here. You will see that we do everything legal here. All right. All right. Thanks for being here, Mr. DA. Thanks for being here, Mr. DA. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1st, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee. February 1st, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1st, 2018 be approved. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1st, 2018 be approved.
Second. Thank you. Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February It has been moved and probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 1st, 2018 stand and approve. 1st, 2018 stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness their government in action. their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope that your day here is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable We hope that your day here is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you for being here. So again, thank you for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm, who will present a resolution honoring At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm, who will present a resolution honoring the heroic efforts of professional caregivers and first responders. the heroic efforts of professional caregivers and first responders. With Commissioner Cynthia Figueroa and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman With Commissioner Cynthia Figueroa and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium, and I think I also see our Fire Commissioner, Commissioner Thiel. at the podium, and I think I also see our Fire Commissioner, Commissioner Thiel. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, Councilman Green, Councilman Taubenberger, and Councilman Squilla. Councilman Green, Councilman Taubenberger, and Councilman Squilla.
All right, good morning, everybody, and thank you so much.
All right, good morning, everybody, and thank you so much.
It is my absolute pleasure, on behalf of City Council, to welcome and honor our everyday
It is my absolute pleasure, on behalf of City Council, to welcome and honor our everyday
heroes who are caregivers in the city of Philadelphia.
heroes who are caregivers in the city of Philadelphia.
It is a great honor to have so many people in the city acknowledge and embrace our caregivers.
It is a great honor to have so many people in the city acknowledge and embrace our caregivers.
That includes our Fire Commissioner, Adam Thiel, our Commissioner of Prisons, Blanche
That includes our Fire Commissioner, Adam Thiel, our Commissioner of Prisons, Blanche
Carney, our District Attorney, Larry Krasner, our Commissioner for DHS, Cynthia Figueroa,
Carney, our District Attorney, Larry Krasner, our Commissioner for DHS, Cynthia Figueroa,
and thank you also to our Labor Union's DC-47, 1199C, and SEIU Healthcare.
and thank you also to our Labor Union's DC-47, 1199C, and SEIU Healthcare. Together, we honor and embrace caregivers who are an essential backbone here in our communities.
Together, we honor and embrace caregivers who are an essential backbone here in our communities. They provide the needed support to our friends and families who need a helping hand and
They provide the needed support to our friends and families who need a helping hand and essential services every day as we pursue our passions and participate in everyday
essential services every day as we pursue our passions and participate in everyday life.
life.
Today, we are here with these everyday heroes: social workers, first responders, teachers,
Today, we are here with these everyday heroes: social workers, first responders, teachers,
doctors, nurses, behavioral specialists, and other community leaders who, despite
doctors, nurses, behavioral specialists, and other community leaders who, despite
the experience of compassion fatigue and secondary trauma, nevertheless are first
the experience of compassion fatigue and secondary trauma, nevertheless are first
to the scene, uplift our communities, and help us through some of our most challenging
to the scene, uplift our communities, and help us through some of our most challenging
times.
times.
And inspired by the commitment of caregivers and first responders, I'm happy to declare,
And inspired by the commitment of caregivers and first responders, I'm happy to declare,
as well as with my colleagues on council, today as Caregivers' and First Responders'
as well as with my colleagues on council, today as Caregivers and First Responders Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Day in the city of Philadelphia. The film Portraits of Professional Caregivers: Their Passion and Pain was screened as part
The film Portraits of Professional Caregivers: Their Passion and Pain was screened as part
of a City Council briefing last April, highlighting the secondary trauma and worker resilience
of a City Council briefing last April, highlighting the secondary trauma and worker resilience
that many caregivers face in our city.
that many caregivers face in our city.
And those who have seen this film, I'm sure, will join me in expressing how incredibly
And those who have seen this film, I'm sure, will join me in expressing how incredibly
struck we were by the determination, commitment of caregivers, their compassion in the most
struck we were by the determination, commitment of caregivers, their compassion in the most challenging of circumstances, as well as family members who are often ill or endanger
challenging of circumstances, as well as family members who are often ill or endangered
themselves.
themselves. And I'm honored to be joined by the filmmakers, a friend and neighbor for a long time, Vic
And I'm honored to be joined by the filmmakers, friend and neighbor for a long time, Vic
Confer, Rodney Whittenburg, who are here today in City Council.
Confer, Rodney Whittenburg, who are here today in City Council.
This award-winning film will be broadcast in honor of caregivers today, actually, at
This award-winning film will be broadcast in honor of caregivers today, actually, at 2:00 PM on WHYY, Channel 12, and I hope everybody today, as we move forward, join me in thanking
2:00 PM on WHYY, Channel 12, and I hope everybody today, as we move forward, join me in thanking our professional caregivers for the compassion and service of their work.
our professional caregivers for the compassion and service of their work.
So today, a resolution honoring the heroic efforts of professional caregivers and first
So today, a resolution honoring the heroic efforts of professional caregivers and first
responders, and declaring February 15th, 2018, as Caregivers' Day in the city of Philadelphia.
responders, and declaring February 15th, 2018, as Caregivers' Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Whereas caregivers and first responders provide stability and a wide range of ongoing and
Whereas caregivers and first responders provide stability and a wide range of ongoing and
emergency supportive services to our most vulnerable citizens, including children,
emergency supportive services to our most vulnerable citizens, including children,
the elderly, people with intellectual, physical, or emotional challenges, and including many
the elderly, people with intellectual, physical, or emotional challenges, and including many
who have experienced trauma and toxic stress which can impact lifelong functioning and
who have experienced trauma and toxic stress which can impact lifelong functioning and health, and?
health, and?
Whereas in the United States, caregivers, both paid and unpaid, provide estimated
Whereas in the United States, caregivers, both paid and unpaid, provide estimated
$450 billion in services each year, and whereas two out of every five paid home care tenants
$450 billion in services each year, and whereas two out of every five paid home care tenants
live in poverty and on unsustainable wages, and?
live in poverty and on unsustainable wages, and?
Whereas significant rates of secondary trauma, also known as vicarious trauma or
Whereas significant rates of secondary trauma, also known as vicarious trauma or
compassion fatigue, are experienced among many professional caregivers and first responders,
compassion fatigue, are experienced among many professional caregivers and first responders, including child welfare workers, firefighters, of course, police, therapists, medical personnel,
including child welfare workers, firefighters, of course, police, therapists, medical personnel, and so many others, and?
and so many others, and?
Whereas it's estimated that 34 million family caregivers in the United States provide
Whereas it's estimated that 34 million family caregivers in the United States provide
uncompensated care, and whereas around 5.5 million caregivers in the United States provide
uncompensated care, and whereas around 5.5 million caregivers in the United States provide military members and veterans who are wounded or ill with comprehensive and critical services,
military members and veterans who are wounded or ill with comprehensive and critical services, helping heal those who have risked their lives for our country, and?
helping heal those who have risked their lives for our country, and?
Whereas caregivers and first responders who step up to the plate based on their profession
Whereas caregivers and first responders who step up to the plate based on their profession or family ties give of their own time and well-being so that others may live their fullest
or family ties give of their own time and well-being so that others may live their fullest lives with dignity and independence, and?
lives with dignity and independence, and?
Whereas caregivers remind us that one of life's greatest gifts is to be able to
Whereas caregivers remind us that one of life's greatest gifts is to be able to
support and recognize the humanity of all our neighbors, and?
support and recognize the humanity of all our neighbors, and?
Whereas caregivers' daily work is a testament to the generosity and grace that
Whereas caregivers' daily work is a testament to the generosity and grace that helped
helped fuel the more humane and just society, and?
fuel the more humane and just society, and?
Whereas many caregivers are on the forefront of the equity and justice movements and are
Whereas many caregivers are on the forefront of the Equity and Justice movements and are
currently leading the Fight for Fifteen Now movement.
currently leading the Fight for Fifteen Now movement. Repeat after me, Fifteen Now?
Repeat after me, Fifteen Now?
Fifteen Now!
Fifteen Now!
Fifteen Now!
Fifteen Now!
Fifteen Now!
Fifteen Now!
And other efforts to make care work sustainable, and?
And other efforts to make care work sustainable, and?
When we fight, we win.
When we fight, we win.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Wrong rally, right.
Wrong rally, right. Whereas caregivers and first responders are unsung heroes who hold families and communities
Whereas caregivers and first responders are unsung heroes who hold families and communities
together, provide immense emotional and physical labor, and are too seldom applauded for
together, provide immense emotional and physical labor, and are too seldom applauded for the
the sacrifices they make every day, now therefore be it.
sacrifices they make every day, now therefore be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors the heroic
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors the heroic
efforts of caregivers and first responders and declares this day, February 15th, 2018,
efforts of caregivers and first responders and declares this day, February 15th, 2018,
as Caregivers' Day in the city of Philadelphia.
as Caregivers' Day in the city of Philadelphia.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Figueroa for remarks. And the Chair recognizes Ms. Figueroa for remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Gimm, and all members of council for this Thank you, Councilwoman Clark, Councilwoman Gimm, and all members of council for this wonderful day and this extraordinary recognition. wonderful day and this extraordinary recognition. I want to also say that I'm speaking on behalf of not just myself, but also the members I want to also say that I'm speaking on behalf of not just myself, but also the members of, who've been recognized, Commissioner Thiel and Commissioner Carney who are with us today. of, who've been recognized, Commissioner Thiel and Commissioner Carney who are with us today. The Department of Human Services as well, behalf of all caregivers, both those who work The Department of Human Services as well, behalf of all caregivers, both those who work in the public and private sector, I am honored to accept this resolution proclaiming February in the public and private sector, I am honored to accept this resolution proclaiming February 15th as Caregiver and First Responders' Day in Philadelphia. 15th as Caregiver and First Responders' Day in Philadelphia. First, a heartfelt thank you to all of those who are in caregiving and first responder First, a heartfelt thank you to all of those who are in caregiving and first responder profession. profession. Today is an important recognition, all caregivers and first responders, and in particular for Today is an important recognition, all caregivers and first responders, and in particular for DHS social workers, who are the case managers on the front lines every day, working to DHS social workers, who are the case managers on the front lines every day, working to stabilize families and meet the needs of more than 10,000 of children who are cared stabilize families and meet the needs of more than 10,000 of children who are cared for by DHS. for by DHS. The very nature of this work can have a significant impact on child welfare workers. The very nature of this work can have a significant impact on child welfare workers. It goes by different names: vicarious trauma, compassion fatigue, secondary trauma, or It goes by different names: vicarious trauma, compassion fatigue, secondary trauma, or otherwise known as just burnout. otherwise known as just burnout. But no matter what term you use, the fact remains that seeing the impact of abuse and But no matter what term you use, the fact remains that seeing the impact of abuse and neglect on children every day stays in your heart forever. neglect on children every day stays in your heart forever. Like other helping professionals and first responders represented by caregivers you Like other helping professionals and first responders represented by caregivers you see this morning, DHS experiences families at its most critical juncture. see this morning, DHS experiences families at its most critical juncture. We see children whose lives have been forever altered by trauma. We see children whose lives have been forever altered by trauma. Whitney, seeing these situations can have a lasting impact on caregivers. Whitney, seeing these situations can have a lasting impact on caregivers. This is one reason DHS encourages staff to practice self-care. This is one reason DHS encourages staff to practice self-care. We do this by supporting counseling for our own staff, and we even have a self-care We do this by supporting counseling for our own staff, and we even have a self-care room. room. We recognize that counseling is critically important. We recognize that counseling is critically important. The fact remains that those of us who are professional caregivers and first responders The fact remains that those of us who are professional caregivers and first responders are often the last ones to take our own advice, to get help. are often the last ones to take our own advice, to get help. So I encourage all of you to take that step that you need to find meaningful activity So I encourage all of you to take that step that you need to find meaningful activity that can take care of you. that can take care of you. Take time for self-care, celebrate yourselves, celebrate each other. Take time for self-care, celebrate yourselves, celebrate each other. The city's first-ever Caregivers' First Responders' Day. The city's first-ever Caregivers' First Responders' Day. Thank you, council. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, I'm sorry, apologize, one more point of order. One more, I'm sorry, apologize, one more point of order. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Vic Confer, who is the director I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Vic Confer, who is the director and co-producer. and co-producer.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We are so pleased that our film, Portraits of Professional Caregivers: Their Passion, We are so pleased that our film, Portraits of Professional Caregivers: Their Passion, Their Pain, has helped to inspire this city, and particularly with the initiatives of Their Pain, has helped to inspire this city, and particularly with the initiatives of councilpersons Gimm, Taubenberger, and Green, to hold a council briefing back in April councilpersons Gimm, Taubenberger, and Green, to hold a council briefing back in April when we showed a segment of the film and discussed secondary trauma and staff resilience, when we showed a segment of the film and discussed secondary trauma and staff resilience, leading to today's event and the Declaration of Caregivers' and First Responders' Day. leading to today's event and the Declaration of Caregivers' and First Responders' Day. I'm so proud of this city and hope that we will begin to see other cities across this I'm so proud of this city and hope that we will begin to see other cities across this country following this wonderful example. country following this wonderful example. We're also very pleased that Councilman Green then arranged a screening of the film We're also very pleased that Councilman Green then arranged a screening of the film for District Council 47, and in the conversation around that, proposed that there be public for District Council 47, and in the conversation around that, proposed that there be public hearings on this topic, and we understand that that is going to be scheduled, that hearings on this topic, and we understand that that is going to be scheduled, that it's definitely going to happen in the coming months. it's definitely going to happen in the coming months. Ideally, we hope that the city of Philadelphia, through the work of the ACES Task Force and Ideally, we hope that the city of Philadelphia, through the work of the ACES Task Force and other groups, will be moving toward the goal of becoming a trauma-informed city. other groups, will be moving toward the goal of becoming a trauma-informed city. Most of all, though, today, we are so grateful that you are all here, those standing here Most of all, though, today, we are so grateful that you are all here, those standing here and those in the audience, and to the many types of professionals who provide care and and those in the audience, and to the many types of professionals who provide care and protection: child welfare workers, other social workers, first responders, firefighters, protection: child welfare workers, other social workers, first responders, firefighters, police, prison staff, teachers, doctors, nurses, therapists, behavioral specialists, police, prison staff, teachers, doctors, nurses, therapists, behavioral specialists, and our Red Cross crisis workers, some of whom are also here today, and other trained and our Red Cross crisis workers, some of whom are also here today, and other trained community leaders, and certainly our home health aides as well. community leaders, and certainly our home health aides as well. While the emphasis today has been on professional caregivers, I expect that many of you, both While the emphasis today has been on professional caregivers, I expect that many of you, both standing here and in the audience, have been family caregivers as well, taking care of standing here and in the audience, have been family caregivers as well, taking care of disabled and ill family members. disabled and ill family members. We want to also recognize and honor you. We want to also recognize and honor you. We thank Commissioner Figueroa for her statements. We thank Commissioner Figueroa for her statements. We hope that some of you may be able to watch the film today if you have a television We hope that some of you may be able to watch the film today if you have a television in your office, 2 o'clock, Channel 12. in your office, 2 o'clock, Channel 12. If you can't, it's going to be broadcast on primetime in the future. If you can't, it's going to be broadcast on primetime in the future. We hope that you will visit our website and that we can make the film as available We hope that you will visit our website and that we can make the film as available as possible to you. as possible to you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Council will be at ease. Council will be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger, who will present a resolution honoring the Boy Scouts of America's 108th birthday. Would Dan Templer and those accompanying him, please join the podium with the Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Green. Also joining is Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you all for being here. This is truly an honor for me as well, because I'm a great believer that more girls and boys should be part of scouting. They do good work and not always get the full credit that they deserve. In fact, we were supposed to celebrate this last Thursday, but something got in the way of this history of the city, and we had to postpone it, and that's certainly understood. But once again, the work they do is really, truly, God's work here on earth. And we had a flag raising on Monday where a scouting delegation was led by the Scout Executive and Chief Executive Officer of the Boy Scouts in our area called the Cradle of Liberty Council, Dan Templer. He was here, and he's here again today, and, well, we're honored to be part of this. Honoring and recognizing the Boy Scouts of America's birthday, 108th birthday, their dedication to improving the lives of children of Philadelphia through leadership and development and volunteer services.
Whereas the Boy Scouts of America were founded on February 8th, 1910, by William D. Boyce, after being inspired to create the organization when he became lost in London and received help from a British Boy Scout. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America work hard to instill community values on scouts from a young age, encouraging them to become responsible citizens, some of these community values are loyalty, helplessness, kindness, bravery, cleanliness, and reverence unto their scouts, and?
Whereas to instill these community values...
Whereas, to instill these community values and to produce responsible citizens, Boy Scouts begin with the Cub Scouts at age five, and may continue all the way up to Sea Scouts at the age 21. And whereas, from a young age, the Boy Scouts of America encourage leadership, not only from the scouts, but from the parents as well, getting them involved as early as possible and setting a positive example for children. And?
Whereas, as the children grow older, the expectation is that their parents will take a step back and allow the children to develop a sense of pride, leadership, and responsibility. With further aging, the scouts begin to go on camping trips and traveling trips, exposing them to the outdoors, and developing a problem-solving thought process. And? Okay. Whereas, the primary developmental tool used by the Boy Scouts to encourage critical thinking and problem-solving are merit badges. These badges challenge a scout to any number of tasks, from learning about other cultures to education, to sporting, to arts, to business. And?
Whereas, scouts are encouraged to diversify the types of badges they pursue, expanding their knowledge and expanding their view of the world with every badge that they earn.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor, recognize, and celebrate the 108th birthday of the Boy Scouts of America, along with their dedication to the youth of Philadelphia.
The chair now recognizes Mr. Templer for remarks.
Thank you, Councilman Taubenberger, for sponsoring this resolution to City Council President Green and to all the City Council members for this honor and this recognition of the tireless efforts of the hundreds of adult volunteers and staff in the city of Philadelphia that worked tirelessly to bring programs to over 4,000 young boys and girls in the city of Philadelphia last year alone through partnerships with the Philadelphia School District, charter schools, religious institutions, and most recently Cobb's Creek Education and Environmental Center. To me, this resolution is a little bit more than that recognition. This resolution represents a new beginning. It's no secret that there's been, in the history of the Boy Scouts in the city of Philadelphia, there's been some times that it could be described as adversarial, although we have enjoyed and are grateful for the support of many City Council members throughout that time. Congress, I'm sorry, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Taubenberger, and countless others. Today, ladies and gentlemen, I'm so proud to report that the Boy Scouts of America have never been more inclusive. Today, scouting programs are open to any person. Now, our differences being behind us, the time is now for us to unify the Boy Scouts in the city of Philadelphia in support of the City Council's commitment to the youth in your respective districts and in the city as a whole. We accept this honor today on behalf of the entire Cradle Liberty Council Boy Scouts as a symbol of a new future for the city of Philadelphia and its youth. And in return, I offer to all of you a pledge from the Cradle Liberty Council Boy Scouts of America that we stand ready, willing, and able to increase our efforts to serve young people in the city of Philadelphia and to be an asset to you and your districts to bring hope for a better future to every child in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beatty's. The next order of business is communications. The chair requests that the sergeant-at-arms deliver the message from the mayor to the chief clerk. Chief clerk, would you please read the messages for the mayor?
To the president and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on February 14, 2018, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on January 25, 2018, Bill Number 170961, and that on February 14, 2018, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on February 1, 2018. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution appointing Adam Tederus to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and a resolution appointing Donald McCoy to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a lease agreement with Peter Roberts Enterprise for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 2504 through 12 Snyder Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement with Springdale Associates for use by the city of all or portions of the premises located at 520 Delaware Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development certain parcels of land situated at 130 West Westmoreland Street, with any improvements thereon, for further conveyance. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development certain parcels of land situated at 3300 North Front Street, with any improvements thereon, for further conveyance, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. The message will be printed in the journal. The chief clerk will please read any other communications in his possession.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
The next order of business will be the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I introduce two bills. Sorry.
Councilwoman Reynolds-Renalds-Brown.
Good morning. I introduce three bills. Forgive me, three resolutions.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating the Philadelphia heritage and Phila-Montco branches of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to enact House Bill 1187 that would amend Title 75 vehicles of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statuits, providing for a pilot program for an automated speed enforcement system along US 1 Roosevelt Boulevard.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage of our next council session.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the United States Congress to reject the Trump administration's plan to make severe cuts to the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
This resolution also will be placed at our next council session for final passage. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I introduce two bills.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 19, 1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Realty Transfer Tax by excluding from the tax a transfer of property between the Philadelphia Housing Authority and a Pennsylvania Limited Partnership whose general partner, PHA, owns and controls, and a transfer of property from PHA or a PHA-controlled PLP to a wholly-owned subsidiary of PHA.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania and to approve the proposed addition to 3620 Locust Walk.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Council President Clark, I offer two bills.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Master Street, 28th Street, Thompson Street, and 27th Street.
Bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Susquehanna Avenue, 13th Street, and Diamond Street, further to adopt the master plan amendment for Temple University, and to approve the construction project on the site proposed for rezoning, and to approve the removal of previously planned construction projects from the master plan.
This bill also will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, two bills and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Silverwood Street, Gay Street, Baker Street, and Carson Street, and to adopt the master plan for the former St. Mary of the Assumption Catholic Church and adjacent parcels.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance submitting Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of Havreford Avenue between Brookhaven Road and Lansdowne Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Villanova University for its community outreach program, a weekly service program that partners with community-based social service and charitable organizations in the Philadelphia area.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining the protection of Philadelphia residents against porch pirates, thieves who steal packages that have been delivered by online retailers.
This bill will also be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance. An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development certain parcels of land situated at 130 West Westmoreland Street.
Will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development certain parcels of land situated at 3300 North Front Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. I have one bill and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
The privileged resolution is signed by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Peter Roberts Enterprises for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 2504 through 12 Snyder Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution congratulating the Philadelphia Eagles for their historic victory over the New England Patriots in Super Bowl.
Super Bowl, that's right. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the launch of the 2018 Work Ready Philadelphia Application and the UAC Summer Youth Employment Program.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Majority Leader Heenan. I have one privileged resolution, cosponsored by councilmembers Squilla, O'Neill, Green, O., Heenan, Greenly, and Taubenberger.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Police Department and law enforcement personnel for their hard work during the largely peaceful Eagles Super Bowl parade.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much. I have one privileged resolution cosponsored by members Green, O., Reynolds, Brown, Taubenberger, and Don.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution declaring February 19, 2018, as Day of Remembrance in honor of the 120,000 Japanese-Americans interned during World War II as a result of President Franklin D. Roosevelt's Executive Order 9066, and honoring the heroism, courage, and loyalty of Japanese-American World War II veterans and internees by continuing their fight to uphold constitutional freedoms and justice for all against xenophobia and hate.
This resolution will be placed on today's passage, final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President Protam Heenan. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I thank them all.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Boy Scouts of America's 108th birthday and their dedication to improving the lives of the children of Philadelphia through leadership, development, and volunteer services.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
I have no bills or resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I have one bill, three resolutions, two non-privileged, one privileged.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Springdale Associates for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 520 North Delaware Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing Sid Mark for his 61 years of broadcasting in the Philadelphia region.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Adam Tederus to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Resolution will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a resolution appointing Donald McCoy to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District.
Resolution will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. I offer two bills, one on behalf of the council president, and two resolutions, one privileged resolution on behalf of the council president, and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance submitting Section 9627 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Establishments on Residential Block Faces by revising requirements and making related changes under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the city of Philadelphia to enter into lease agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development out of which the city would lease to paid on a project-by-project basis certain land and facilities in the Fairmont Park System, recreation centers, playgrounds, and branches in the Free Library of Philadelphia system, and which would permit paid to sublease such facilities on a project-by-project basis to other organizations in conformity with the Economic Development Financing Law.
This bill also will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the School District of Philadelphia for switching to compostable serving items as part of an initiative to develop and implement environmentally-friendly practices.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the rebuild project statement including annual budgets for project expenditures for fiscal years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, a list of city properties to be included in the program, and a master economic opportunity plan.
This resolution will be placed on final passage calendar at the consideration of the next session of city council. Chair now recognizes counsel O.
Thank you very much. I offer no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair now recognizes councilman Greenly on my behalf.
Okay, for what? I thought we had--
Introduction to Bills and Resolutions.
We have committee reports first? Mr. Chair, I think we have committee reports first. Oh, on your be--oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Chairman, on your behalf there, you are offering no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair now recognizes counsel O.
I have no bills or resolutions.
Sorry, that light is on by error.
Okay, thank you.
The next order of business is report some committee, and the chair recognizes councilman Greenly for a report from the Committee of Law and Government.
Is this me? He recognize me? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports four bills and two resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Law and Government, to which is referred bill number one seven zero seven one six, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory minimal annual appropriation to the Police Advisory Commission or any successor body or bodies. And bill number one seven zero eight five four entitled an ordinance amending section nine eight oh four of the Philadelphia Code entitled Unfair Rental Practices to require good cause for certain residential evictions and to provide for a first option for existing tenants to redoon a lease. And bill number one seven one one zero nine entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the provision of mandatory training for city officers and employees regarding sexual harassment in the workplace. And bill number one seven one 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 three entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine forty-three hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage Theft Complaints to make various wage-related violations a violation of the code to further provide for determinations by the city regarding wage theft complaints and for appeals of such determinations. And resolution number one seven zero seven four three entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory minimum annual appropriation to the Police Advisory Commission or any successor body or bodies. And resolution number one seven one one three four entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the provision of mandatory annual training for all city officers and employees regarding sexual harassment in the workplace and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills numbers one seven zero seven one six, one seven zero eight five four, one seven one one zero nine, and one seven one 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 three.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number one seven oh seven one six, one seven oh eight five four, one seven one one oh nine, and one seven one one thirteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Resolutions number one seven oh seven forty-three and one seven one one thirty-four will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services respond eight bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred bill number one seven zero six six nine entitled an ordinance establishing an amended parking regulation change in the vicinity of Chester Avenue and Fifty-Fifth Street. And bill number one seven zero nine six two entitled an ordinance amending chapter nine two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Activities on Streets by amending section nine to eleven entitled Boxes for Distribution of News and Printed Material relating to the regulation of newspaper boxes on the public sidewalk. And bill number one seven one zero eight two entitled an ordinance authorizing Mr. Amin Tyler, owner and operator of the newsstand located on the southwest corner of Fifty-second and Spruce Streets, to construct, use, and maintain conduits in, under, and across the southwest corner of Fifty-second and Spruce Streets. And bill number one seven one zero eight three entitled an ordinance establishing a No Parking Regulation on the eighty-two-hundred block of Torresdale Avenue East Side between the entrances to the Penny Pack Trail. And bill number one eight zero 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 nine entitled an ordinance authorizing the Capital Group Two to install, own, and maintain a proposed retaining wall and existing fence encroachment at two thousand McKinley Street. And bill number one eight zero zero one four entitled an ordinance amending section five of an ordinance, bill number one seven oh four seventy-four A, approved June twenty-seven two thousand seventeen, entitled an ordinance authorizing thirteen thirty-eight Incorporated to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at thirteen thirty-eight through forty South Tenth Street by removing language related to the automatic expiration of the ordinance nine months after the owner has entered into the agreement as required. And bill number one eight zero zero one six entitled an ordinance amending section twelve seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate a bicycle lane in the eastbound direction on Race Street from North Eighth Street to North Fifth Street, and to remove a travel lane in the eastbound direction on Race Street from North Eighth Street to North Sixth Street. And bill number one eight zero zero seven six entitled an ordinance amending section twelve seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate bicycle lanes in both directions on Island Avenue from Penrose Avenue to Enterprise Avenue and on Enterprise Avenue for its entire length, and authorizing the removal of travel lanes on both Island Avenue and Enterprise Avenue in the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair again recognizes councilman Squilla.
And I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of the eight bills that were just read into the record.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the eight bills that were just read into the record by the clerk. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and those bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules has had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendar today. Bill numbers one eight zero zero eight two, one eight zero zero eight three, one eight zero zero eight four, one eight zero zero eight six, one seven zero seven nine three, all other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the resolutions and bills on our final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testing fine on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. On that podium, there is a device. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the lights turn red, we would ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to speak. Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
Joe Dennehall, commenting on one seven one one four five and one eight zero zero eight three.
Good morning. This is official decree of the people. Red Man Damis Quelwanto as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council mayor and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. I quote Dr. King. "He who passively accepts evil is as much involved in it as he who perpetuates it." If council, mayor, and others love to quote Dr. King, why don't they honor Dr. King by living what Dr. King preaches? Have agents and agencies denied and defied inalienable, invaluable, God-given rights? How can agents and agencies steal my home without compensation, due process, or Seventh Amendment, trial by jury? How can government pay a contractor upwards of a hundred billion, mostly federal taxpayer dollars, to build a mall on my stolen home? If God gave people rights, how can government deny those rights? If violating one law one time could land people in jail, why do oath, constitution, and law violators go unprosecuted? If hundreds of millions, federal taxpayer dollars are involved, why have no officials reported this matter to the DA, PA Attorney General, and the US Attorney General as required by law? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC ninety-eight-two, ninety-eight-three, ninety-eight-five, ninety-eight-six, ninety-eight-seven, eighteen USC two forty-one, two forty-two, twenty-three-eight-one, twenty-three-eight-four, PA Constitution, Article One, Sections one through eleven, twenty-six, PACSA, seven oh three, seven oh five, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, and other laws listed in SCOTUS fifteen, eighty-nine, sixty-five, fourteen, one three three oh, fourteen, four oh five six appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue, to denial of God-given forty-two USC ninety-eight-two property rights for twenty-four years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color of law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act. A more than fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require constitution laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony. Julie Wertheimer, commenting on resolution one eight zero zero eight four.
Hello, my name is Rachel Eisenberg.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Eisenberg. I'm with the Managing Director's Office of Criminal Justice, and I am here on behalf of President Judge Wood Skipper, the Chair of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. Today, if passed by this body, Philadelphia will officially join counties across the country as part of the Stepping Up Initiative. The Stepping Up Initiative is devoted to reducing the number of people with mental illness in local jail. As of today, thirty-eight percent of individuals incarcerated in the city's jails are taking medication for a mental illness, and sixteen percent have a serious mental illness diagnosis. Philadelphia's criminal justice and behavioral health partner agencies have been working together for many years to address the needs of those in jail with mental illness and to reduce the amount of time they spend in jail instead of in community treatment. The Stepping Up Initiative provides a framework that will enhance these longstanding efforts through data-driven collaborative efforts. By working together, the Stepping Up Partners will be able to take a holistic approach to reform, to identify service gaps, and to develop innovative alternatives to incarceration. We believe now is the right time to engage in this effort, as a recent poll shows that sixty percent of Americans believe that rehabilitating or treating a person is a more appropriate response to nonviolent offenses, as opposed to punishment. From the same poll, except for in instances of the most serious crimes, seventy-five percent of Americans believe that government's best response to an offense by a person with a mental illness should not involve jail time. While Philadelphia has been engaged in a major reform effort to safely reduce the local jail population through the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge, the Stepping Up Initiative will focus additional attention on the unique needs of individuals who have a mental illness. This focus will complement the city's other jail reduction efforts. By joining the Stepping Up Initiative, Philadelphia's criminal justice and behavioral health partners are making a commitment to collaboratively address the over-incarceration of those with mental illness, and to developing solutions based on treatment and recovery. On behalf of the entire Criminal Justice Advisory Board, we thank councilman Jones and all of council for their consideration of this important effort.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker. This time, the chair recognizes councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two, one bill and one resolution. Excuse me. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit introduction of an additional bill and resolution.
Thank you. There's been a motion to suspend the rules to-- There's been a motion to suspend the rules to allow the bill and resolution to be introduced out of sequence. Uh, this particular time has been moved in property second, and all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the education supplement to the Philadelphia Home Law Charter relating to the eligibility, selection, and removal of the members of the Board of Education relating to the Board of Education's responsibility for the administration of the school district, creating a parent and community advisory council as approved by resolution of City Council.
That will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a nonprivileged resolution proposing an amendment to the education supplement to the Philadelphia Home Law Charter relating to the eligibility, selection, and removal of the members of the Board of Education relating to the Board of Education's responsibility for the administration of the school district, creating a parent and community advisory council, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
And refer to committee. Thank you, Councilwoman. Now go back to our calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of one eight oh, oh, eight-two?
A resolution urging the Philadelphia Parking Authority to recognize the Martin Luther King Day holiday as a non-ticketing day.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. One oh, eight, one eight oh, oh, eighty-two has been adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh, oh, eighty-three.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as eight fifteen through eight nineteen North Fifteenth Street, eight twenty-five through eight thirty-one North Fifteenth Street, and eight twenty-four through eight twenty-six Byrne Street, fifteen twenty-two through fifteen twenty-four Parrish Street, fifteen thirty-six Parrish Street, and fifteen thirty-eight Parrish Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh, oh, eighty-three is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh, oh, eighty-four.
A resolution authorizing Philadelphia to officially join the National Stepping Up Initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jails.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh, oh, eighty-four is adopted. Mr. Decker, one eight oh, oh, eighty-six.
A resolution also naming Angelo Place between Mars Place and South Eighty-Second Street, Joe Wilson Way, to honor the life and legacy of Joseph Wilson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution one eight oh, oh, eighty-six is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of one seven oh, seven ninety-three.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, Oxford Street, American Street, Master Street, Sixth Street, and Girard Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gennan Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squillit, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen, and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and celebrating the Philadelphia heritage and Philomontco branches of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Villanova University for its community outreach program, a weekly service program that partners with community-based social service and charitable organizations in the Philadelphia area, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining the protection of Philadelphia residents against porch pirates, thieves who steal packages that have been delivered by online retailers, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating the Philadelphia Eagles for their historic victory over the New England Patriots in Super Bowl fifty-two, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I happily move the adoption of this resolution.
Dilly-dilly.
Dilly-dilly. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say dilly-dilly?
Dilly-dilly.
No, no. No, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm sorry, this is on the record. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the launch of the two thousand eighteen Work Ready Philadelphia Application and UAC Summer Youth Employment Program, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Police Department and law enforcement personnel for their hard work during the largely peaceful Eagles Super Bowl Parade, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring February nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, as Day of Remembrance in honor of the one hundred and twenty thousand Japanese-Americans interned during World War Two as a result of President Franklin D. Roosevelt's Executive Order ninety-sixty-six, and honoring the heroism, courage, and loyalty of Japanese-American World War Two veterans and internees by continuing their fight to uphold constitutional freedoms and justice for all against xenophobia and hate, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to cede a little bit of time to my colleague, Councilman Taubenberger, who will speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gimm, and thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say, I, I wouldn't be doing my, my father justice. Uh, I want to thank Councilwoman Gimm, and I was honored actually to co-sponsor this resolution with her, and hearing from someone whose father was actually interned. There were many Philadelphians who were interned, there were Italian-American and German-Americans, and this brings to light all of them. They were very, very difficult times, although I was not alive at the time, it was not a good thing for my dad to be interned for over a year with very, very little justice being, being done. So remembering these folks, remembering this action, and how difficult wartime can be, it is important that we also remember those innocent people who were caught up in the middle of a giant storm, and I thank you for this opportunity, and I thank Councilwoman Gimm for the opportunity also to speak on this resolution.
Thank you.
I second it if you need it.
Do, do, we do the, we move for the motion. You already move?
I'd like to move for the, uh, for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the Boy Scouts of America's one hundred and eighth birthday and their dedication to improving the lives of the children of Philadelphia through leadership development and volunteer services, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Sid Mark for his sixty-one years of broadcasting in the Philadelphia region, introduced by Councilman Squillit.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squillit.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption, second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the School District of Philadelphia for switching to compostable serving items as part of an initiative to develop and implement environmentally friendly practices, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. At this time, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I have, uh, two items, but first, on behalf of all council members, I, I would just ask that we, uh, stand in a moment of silence in recognition of the, uh, mass shootings that occurred in, uh, Parkdale, Florida.
Thank you, Councilman. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Council President.
You're welcome, Councilman.
I just wanted to point out that today, we were gonna have a hearing regarding, uh, criminal squatters, and, uh, that hearing has been postponed, but I did wanna point out that, um, uh, I have invited, uh, the members of the committee, as well as, uh, representatives from Community Legal Services, the Senior Law Center, and the Tenants Union, uh, as well as some other elected officials, to join me, uh, to visit the home of a woman who does not wanna be identified, uh, but I would like to tell her story. She's an African-American woman, seventy years old, uh, who is a widow, and she put all her money into purchasing a home, and she was rehabbing the home because she planned to live there. A neighbor, uh, broke into her home and padlocked the building, and she called the police, and the police were of no help. And a long period of time, uh, passed, uh, she went through the sheriff's office, the courts, and by the time she was able to re-enter her home, it had been completely stripped, including windows and radiators, everything she put into the home, her whole life savings. Um, she, uh, is, uh, inviting us to visit her so that she can encourage city council to do something about this problem. And so, uh, I will notify, uh, members when the date is available, working with Councilwoman Bass, uh, to address this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Speech is on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm hoping all my colleagues had a wonderful Valentine's Day, and, um, I wanna share with you, Mr. President, mine. So after thirty years of a long-term relationship, um, you kinda get signals that things are changing. When your boo used to sit right behind you, and now he sits all the way across the hall, you know? He used to care about, you know, little things and, and, and take, but when you know, you really know. When you get invited to a, a dinner up at the Hilton, there's a fireplace there, and they say to you, order whatever you want. Now, this is uncharacteristic of this individual. Say, whatever you want. And then the conversation goes into careers and, you know, how, how they wanna grow and things like that, and when, as soon as you hear the words, it's not you, it's me, you know it's over. I, I rise to say that my boo, my brother, for thirty years, has decided to move on. Uh, he's decided to put money above our relationship, and moved to, um, take on a fourth-quarter role at the Mercury Public Assets, at, uh, uh, Public Affairs Firm, and I couldn't be prouder of my brother, uh, for being able to do that. So I, I started in Jessinaw, and seriously, um, there are countless times when he's made both political contributions to, uh, the City of Philadelphia, ranging all the way back to, um, You For Bowser. I think that was his first little foray into politics where he, like, mo, most people have to Google who Bowser was, but he was, he was there on the front line. Um, I could not be sitting here but for Al Spivey Jr. running my campaign in oh-seven, and I could point to people in this room who probably wouldn't be here as well without Al Spivey's, uh, help. Blondie Rose Brown, uh, and, and, and others. But I wanna say that beyond his political prowess, and, and one more on politics, when the congressman calls you up, and it was, uh, Brady, and says, I, I need to borrow your guy. Literally called me up and said, I, can he take a leave of absence to go over to Jersey to help some campaigns over there? And you, you're taken aback because he doesn't call you like that for anything. Um, you know you got a, a powerhouse, a political operative. And when he went over there, he didn't win one victory, he came back with seven sheriffs and congressmen and commissioners and things like that. He was bloodied but unbowed. Um, but that's the political side. What you don't see about him is that he has a substantive public policy side. Tomorrow, we will break ground on a facility known as New West. I took you for a ride when I first came down Market Street. You told me, get in line, it's gonna take a while, but due to his tenacity, tomorrow we will be breaking ground with the governor on the largestly fund, largest-funded state project in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That's the Al Spivey that, uh, should go on the record and be known by all, and, uh, some people should fear him leaving, some people should applaud him leaving, but we're just glad we had him. Al Spivey Jr. joined me in recognizing him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Al, you the man. Get the camera off you. I don't wanna see you dripping. Turn the, turn the camera away. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, obviously, last week was a very good week in Philadelphia with the Eagles victory and the parade, and I think we all enjoyed that, uh, but then reality sets in. Uh, certainly, it set in big and strong yesterday with that, uh, horrific incident in South Florida. But there was a reality last week, um, that maybe some people, with all the things that were going on, some people missed, and that was the passing of, uh, longtime state rep, Frank Oliver, at the age of ninety-five. Uh, former Representative Oliver served from nineteen seventy-three to two thousand ten in the Hundred and Ninety-Fifth Legislature District where I lived my whole life, and I think counting primaries and generals, I think I voted for him like thirty-eight times, but, um, I know he served with Councilwoman, part of that time he served with Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Johnson. He worked on issues such as providing, helping provide supermarkets in low-income areas, which I know Council President and others were certainly involved with, and with helping inmates' rights and returning citizens' rights, and he was certainly a strong supporter of the Berean Institute. Uh, on a personal note, Frank was a huge supporter of mine. He was the first and only chair of my campaign, and as I said at his service when I spoke this past Saturday, many people came up to me, especially in my earlier races, and said, I didn't know them, but they were supporting me because Frank Oliver asked them to. And if I was good with Frank, I was good with them. It illustrated the great respect people had for Representative Oliver, and I was very happy to take advantage of that. Um, he was also an active member of the Democratic Party. He and I were neighboring ward leaders, and actually, we were neighbors. We lived each, uh, just about four blocks from each other, almost, uh, actually, the whole time I was alive. Uh, we didn't agree on everything, and he would let me know when I didn't agree with him, but we worked on a lot of community issues together, and I think it's safe to say we were friends, and I valued his support. So if, if it was appropriate, Mr., I know we had a moment of silence earlier, but if, uh, if, if I may, to honor the memory of this public servant, I respectfully request we have a standing moment of silence in memory of Representative Oliver. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Truly will be missed. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, you know, I'd be remiss to not say congratulations and thank you for your service to Al Spivey, you know? You could tell a person's true commitment to public service by their reactions at certain times and certain moments, and he sat there real cool and calm, right? Smiling, showing off his socks, having a good, you know, dressed dapper, right? But, you know, your commitment and your reaction, uh, is an indication of how much you, you actually put into the district and the city of Philadelphia, so, uh, before I move on to what I wanted to say, that, you know, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for all you've done, and, and congratulations, and it was a pleasure working with you for all these years. all these years. And, you know, we still have many more years ahead of us, but, you know, true leaders like Councilman Jones recognizes that some people just need to go lead, and this is your chance. So good luck to you. I wanted to recognize someone else who was a good public servant, Council President, somebody who's put in 42 years with the Health Department and the Environmental Health and Services for over 2, 42 years, as I indicated. His last day is tomorrow, and that's Bernie Finkel. I've got to work with him over the past several years with some issues in our district, and, you know, he was somebody that, you know, that is a true city employee who rose through the ranks, continued his education, and has become the chief program office, the chief of the program of the Office of Food Protection. And through his career, he's overseen Live Aid. All right, so in 42 years, you get to see a lot, right? I remember in grade school, coming home and watching Live Aid on TV, but Live Aid, Live Eight, Republican National Convention, the Papal Visit Democratic National Convention, and over 40 Welcome America celebrations. So in his career, he has seen many, many changes in environmental status and regulatory changes, advances in environmental sciences. So he has risen to the challenge as we do as a policymaker, but as a department, our departments also change as they should have. So with that, I just wanted to, you know, congratulate him in his 42-year career as he retires tomorrow, and, you know, who surely be missed, and it was pleasant working with him, you know, throughout the past five years and some of the issues in my district. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reiterate, we've talked about technology in this chamber in the past, and we've talked about the fact that in the last 10 years, one out of four new jobs in Philadelphia were tech-based. We've also talked about the average income in tech is $39,000 higher than any other field. We've also talked about one out of three college, one out of three high school graduates can get jobs in tech that don't require a college degree. We've talked about 100,000 millennials that have moved to Philadelphia in the last 10 years. We've also talked about coding by kids with Sylvester Mobley. We've talked about there are 16 high schools right now where we're teaching 15 kids in every school coding. We also have it at the Correctional Institution, prisons on State Road, where we're teaching the young people and adults. But the best news is that recently, in the Innovation Report for the United States, it's called Innovations That Matters 2017 Report, Philadelphia moved up five notches in tech. We're number three in the United States, behind Boston and San Francisco, ahead of New York. Pretty amazing. We're number three. So I just want to reiterate, this is our future. We still have 400,000 people in poverty. We need to figure out how to coordinate technology in our public schools and teach it from K through 12, along with personal financial literacy. But the fact that we're number three in tech is huge. So just want to congratulate the city and everybody here in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, today, I read two disturbing articles as it relates to equity and homeownership, not only here in the City of Philadelphia, but all across America. One article is titled, Why White Owners in Philadelphia Can Get Federal Mortgages Meant for Black Neighborhoods. And another article was titled, For People of Color, Banks Are Shutting the Door to Home Ownership, specifically addressing the issue of modern-day redlining where particularly people of African-American and Latino consent are denied home mortgages and the home repair mortgages. And so in the near future, I'm going to be calling on hearings to examine this issue, primarily because such states as Atlanta, Detroit, St. Louis, San Antonio, Mobile, Alabama, Greenville, North Carolina, Gainesville, Florida, and Iowa City in Iowa, and more specifically, the City of Philadelphia, was amongst a research project done by the Center for Investigative Reporting that has disclosed more than 31 million records, particularly looking at home mortgage denials, and Philadelphia is one of those particular cities. And so, you know, I live in a very changing district, particularly Pointe Breeze, and most of you know the work that I do around housing and addressing inclusivity as it relates to development that's taking place all throughout the Second Councilmatic District, and also some of you have districts that are very changing. We want to make sure the process is fair, and we want to make sure that if banks are doing business here in the City of Philadelphia, they're doing the right thing by the African-American, Latino, and people of color, individuals in the City of Philadelphia who are taxpayers. And so I look forward to working with my colleagues to address this very critically important issue, because if we're going to move forward as a great city, we can't have a tale of two cities, a tale of those who have and a tale of those who have not. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. There being no additional speeches, this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, 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 Mr. President. I would be remiss not to echo Councilman Jones's comments and say, on behalf of all the members of Philadelphia City Council, my staff, and myself, congratulations, Al Spivey. And it's clear to me that you'll never have to worry about the question and what have you done for others. So best wishes to you. With that, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, February 22, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's moved in property second. That the council stand adjourn until Thursday, February 22, 2018, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.